Being a candidate is not easy. People step up, they put their lives aside, their work aside, to have an opportunity to serve us as a community. And so they deserve to hear, they deserve for us to hear everything they have to say so that we can make an informed decision. And when we get those pamphlets, well, there you go. Now you know what Josh Thompson looks like, and you know what Deborah Kelgor looks like, and those things are very important. You did not come here to hear me speak, so I am going to put the microphone down and we are going to begin.
Good evening, and thank you all for being here on this wonderful summer night. It is hot, but I see a lot of old friends, and I see some relatives in the room, and hopefully I'll make some new friends here tonight. What I want to tell you is why I have the best job in the city of Edmonds. I love this town. It is where I was born and raised, and I have had the privilege of living here for about 40 years. The first 20 years of my life and the last 20 years of my life. And what makes it so special for me is because I spent my entire career doing things called planning. Long-range transportation, environmental and land use planning. And it's a real privilege to be able to use all my experience and all my knowledge to apply it to the city that I really love. And it's been a pleasure for me serving for the past five years, and hopefully you will vote for me, and I can serve for another four years. I explained a little bit about myself. I'd just like to honor my parents. In 1954, the family of four came, and we built our house in Edmonds. And it was where my mom and dad passed away. They were able to stay in their own home to the very last breath, and it's given me a real sense of place to always have that be home. And so no matter where I was, I always came back to Edmonds. And we're facing a situation that I'm dreading, and we're selling the house, and it's going to be torn down and rebuilt, but it's not, it's not of my doing. So that gets me around to what I'm passionate about. I really care about this town. I care about the historic preservation. I care about the environment, and I care very much about the arts. This used to be my junior high, and it's where I first prodded the boards. And this room used to be our library, and that was a lot of fun. But we're not here to talk about what happened yesteryear. We're talking about what happens in the future. And as a planner, I deal in 20-year futures, and I would like the opportunity to use everything that I've applied to continue to be your Edmonds City Council. And what I will promise is that no one will work harder for you, no one will be more prepared, and no one will listen more carefully. And thank you very much, I hope, for your vote.
Hello, my name is Josh Thompson, and I am running for Edmonds City Council, position I believe that I have the experience and the skill set to make a very positive impact on the council starting day one. For the last five and a half years, I've served as legislative aide at the Snoke County Council. One of my key responsibilities there is I'm the first person that people turn to when they have an issue, when they don't know what to do about something that's come up in their life. One of the things that I've gotten pretty successful at is helping them navigate government, which seems like a simple task until you actually have a problem, and you try to figure out this giant machine called government. And it's not as hospitable as it should be, it is not as welcoming as it should be. People with physical disabilities, that have trouble hearing, they have a difficult time just getting a real person on the phone these days. And that's often where I step in. I don't always get them the answer they want. There are often some heartbreaking times, some gut-wrenching times, but I figure that I've done my best. I've done, you know, what I'm there to do when I listen to them, when I hear them, when I try to help them figure out how to fix their problems, because I can only do so much as a government agent. But if I can help them, that's what we're there for. You know, just to talk about platform really quickly, you know, I believe that we do not have to have an either-or government. I believe that on any number of issues, we can find a common ground. You know, I think we can protect our critical areas while preparing for growth. I see Highway 99 as an enormous opportunity for that. And to be honest, what brought me in after 15 years of activism, after 12 years of being a campaign manager and a consultant? The thing that brought me in was for the last year and a half, I have, as a citizen, been attending meetings around Highway 99 redevelopment, reading up on every bit of information that I could get, and I kept not hearing certain concerns of mine being brought up by council members. I heard it in the audience, but honestly, I didn't hear it coming from the council. And as I see I'm running out of time, I would only summarize by saying, the thing I think I can bring to the council is respect for the office, good governance, somebody who listens to the people and helps them bring their issues through the government, through a system I know, and a system that I know we can improve. And I'm sorry, I'm out of time. So I would love to have your support. My name again is Josh Thompson, I'm running for Edmonds City Council.
Well, good afternoon or evening, everybody. What a great crowd, this is fantastic. My name is Steve Johnston, I'm running for Port Commissioner, position five. I'm a 40-year resident of the Port District in the city of Edmonds. I love Edmonds, I love the port. I have a 35-year environmental career, Edmonds-based Landau Associates, finishing up as CEO for the last 10 years. And in that function, I was essentially the program manager for environmental projects for the Port of Edmonds for at least 15 years. That included the cleanup of Harper Square, that included the design of our pressure wash facility, which is a state-of-the-art facility, and that included the design of our boatyard runoff treatment facility. All of those have brought the Port of Edmonds into the mainstream, and even as a leading agent in environmental applications. It is a green marina, it is a certified clean boatyard, and that attracted me to the Port of Edmonds. Not only was I part of that, but when I was asked to step up and be a candidate for an appointed commissioner position to replace Mary Lou Block, a wonderful commissioner for 14 years, I couldn't wait. It was a great opportunity. I love the port, I have a passion for the port, and I put my hat in a ring and somehow got selected, delighted to do that. And I want to bring that environmental expertise, or continue to bring that environmental expertise to the port for the next four years. We've had a great run, both financially and environmentally, at the port. Over the last just few years, not only from the economic downturn of 2009, we have increased our net revenues and net income every year, reducing the costs, operating costs, reducing taxes, and increasing our revenues. We have a $12 million reserve dedicated in part to future environmental initiatives, and in part to rebuilding the marina, if and when down the road we need to do so. But in the meantime, through conscious management and a lot of easy and hard decisions, we are slowly and surely maintaining our five-star marina at its utmost. The port has a lot of stuff on its plate right now. We're essentially an economic engine, that's our job. Our job is to create jobs, our job is to create economic opportunity within the community. We've done an excellent job of doing that, I look forward to doing that for the next four years, and I hope I can count on your support and your vote to continue the momentum. Thank you very much.
Good afternoon, everyone, and thank you for coming out on such a warm night. My name is Susan Payne, and I've lived in Edmonds for the last 17 years now. I'm running for Port Commissioner, this is position number five, and Steve Johnston, and he and I are running against each other. What I'd like to do is introduce myself a little bit. I have spent the last 17 years in the city of Edmonds, and I love Edmonds. I moved to Edmonds for the school district. Early on, when I moved into the school, into Edmonds area, I ran for the school district board, and I was on this board of school district directors for six years. This was with Ann McMurray and another, you know, a lot of other bunch of really committed people. What we did during the downturn was pretty much amazing stuff. We were able to develop the Linwood High School, and also shut down a couple of schools because it was during the downturn. It was amazing experience there. What I'd like to talk about is my passion for the environment and also for the Edmonds Marsh. I'm a daughter of two very, very passionate people. My mother has been an advocate for a lot of causes in the city of Seattle, and I grew up learning how to go ahead and be a good administrator and a really great advocate for groups that need to have some attention brought to them. My dad was a world-class scientist, and from him I got the joy and the love of science and being outdoors. He was an ecologist. One of the things that has attracted me to Edmonds, and I love to go down there, is the marina and the marsh. You get to look at all sorts of wonderful parts of nature down there. And that was really, really important for people to go ahead and connect with the green spaces, the open spaces in our universe. This is our chance to go ahead and have a really wonderful experience connecting to nature. Some of the skills that I bring to this position is that I've spent the last 25 years working in municipal government, and the last 10 years in working in both land use and right-of-way use, so I understand the permitting process and also the regulatory sort of regimen that is required for environmentally sensitive areas. I know how to look at plans, I've run nice big projects and small projects all the way through their completion. What I'm asking for is your vote and your support, beginning a lot of nice support from the community about the marsh, and it's been a wonderful way to go ahead and highlight a terrific asset for all of Edmonds. So I'd like for you all to come out and support my campaign for the Port Commission. Thank you very much.
Remember some of the stuff on here, but probably not all of it. Hi, I'm Bruce Ferris, I'm the president of Port Commissioner from position three, District three. And first, I think it's appropriate to thank Annabelle Indivisible Edmonds, and I figured out that ENAC stands for Edmonds Neighborhood Action Coalition. So putting these things together is not easy, it's a lot of work, and I thank those folks for doing that, because this is a way for you people to look in the faces of the people running for office and figure out who in the heck it is you want to support. And the first question, and I'm pretty sure a lot of people already know this, what is a port? A port is in the city. In the state of Washington, a port is more like a fire district than it is a municipality. Under the state law, RCW 53, ports are restricted very narrowly to what they can spend money on and what they can work on. And it turns out that that restriction applies to all ports as they implement them locally. I'm not going to go into great detail, but if somebody would like to talk about that, I'd love to. Most importantly, why am I, and why should you be proud of your port? Your port sits down there, and it kind of makes people happy to walk up and down the boardwalk, and most people don't pay a lot of attention. But it turns out, I'm going to read this, "The marina was voted the best marina on Puget Sound by King TV." That's a fact. It was voted, bleh, was voted the best marina in the entire United States by Marina Dockage Magazine. And that's, that's not trivial, that's significant. You've got a really good marina down here, and a really good staff and commission that takes care of it and worries about maximizing the utility of it to the district. The port is home to a lot of businesses. There's the thousand boats that park down there in the wet moorage and in the dry stack. And all of the owners of those, most of the owners of those boats frequent Edmonds businesses, whether they be restaurants or stores. The port has worked hard at enhancing tourism, which is something that is promoted under state law for ports to do. Puget Sound Express is doing great down there. They go out and watch whales, and it turns out last year they did 11,000 people, and they did 16, and next year they're going to put on two boats. It's working great for them. It's bringing money into our community that helps minimize the increase in your property taxes and my property taxes. The Destination Port of Edmonds program is really important. Not too many people in the community know about that. The people who visit us by boat know about the fact that they get a coupon book, and with that coupon they can visit businesses around town. It's a way that the port has to promote businesses in the community and get people from the outside to spend money here and then go home, which is kind of what we want our tourists to do. Bob McChesney is here. Bob is president of the South Snoke County Tourism Organization this year. Point being that we've dedicated a lot of resources and a lot of time towards promoting tourism and economic vitality into our community. We received a grant from the Port of Seattle. Zero, how dare you, zero. Yeah, the port's in good financial health, and I'm not going to go any further than that, I could at length. I guess the most important thing to say is that I really believe that a lot more can be gained, both sides of this, by talking individually and answering your questions, because I need to know what you're thinking as residents of the community, and you need to know why we're doing what we're doing. I believe we have the best managed port in the state of Washington, and that isn't just my opinion, other people have said the same thing. And I'm asking for your vote to keep it that way. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Laura Petzo, and I am running for Port Commission, position three, and as Bruce Ferris has done, I will in fact use some notes. I'm hoping that as you fill out your ballot, you'll find that I can check a lot of the boxes for you that you're looking for. I'm a longtime resident of Edmonds and a longtime community volunteer. I majored in economics at Whitman College, and I got a law degree from the University of Washington School of Law. I've been an elected official in the community now for 22 years, and my experience includes nine and a half years on the Edmonds City Council. I served as former council president and also as a former chair of the finance committee. With that, you might assume, and I was asked several times this afternoon, that I would run for council, which I did indeed consider, until filing week, when six times as many people called and said, please run for port, calls, emails, et cetera. I looked at the port minutes, studied what's been going on at the port, and I think that this is a very important thing for me to do. One of the things I've enjoyed in my community involvement is being able to participate in the acquisition of three of Edmonds' most popular parks. I was able to participate in the acquisition of Marina Beach Park, I was able to work for the acquisition of Hickman Park, and I was able to participate in the acquisition of Civic Playfield. But this opportunity at the port may be the most important opportunity of all. This opportunity at the port allows us the opportunity to pick the course we want for Puget Sound and for our marsh, and that's a big deal. I hope you can find some time to talk with me afterwards, after the speeches are done, and share your thoughts and concerns and input on that. I promise, if elected, that I will be responsive to the community. In fact, I have been told that I am responsive to a fault. Sorry about that, but it's okay, there's other members of boards, commissions, and city councils, so it's okay. I also promise to prioritize both economic development and environmental stewardship. For me, it is not, do I want cake or do I want ice cream? This is that important. I want both. This is a birthday party, this is a big deal. So thank you very much for coming out tonight, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak with you, and I will stay around afterwards so that we can talk more. Thanks.
I just want to announce that Commissioner Fred Gouge is unable to join us today because he has a family vacation that he had planned quite a while ago, so I said I would make sure that I let you know.
Hello, everyone. I'm just going to repeat what everyone is saying, and thank you very much, because it's a warm sunny day, warm sunny day on a Sunday evening, I appreciate you being here. My name is Angela Harris, and I'm running for Port Commissioner in District Four, or District One, sorry, I'm just going to make up a district here if I'm running. A little bit about my experience, I'm a business program manager at Microsoft, where I've been for 12 years. I have 20 years of project management experience, and that's some of the experience that I'm bringing forward. What makes me successful in my role dealing with a lot of different stakeholders is my ability to listen, to lead, and to collaborate. And I think that those are all key skills that I can bring to this position. I would be very excited to bring fresh ideas and that leadership and project management to the port. I believe that my, well, I'll go just personally speaking a little bit about me, I have four children, my partner and I have six between us, and I'm very passionate about protecting our future for them. I spent some time with my daughter down at the marsh, down walking quite a bit, and talking about running for this position, and she felt just as strongly, she's 10, she's going to be awesome. So I believe that protecting the marsh and the shoreline are very crucial, that fresh perspectives are needed to tackle the environmentally critical area that's going to benefit my children and their children and your children. Once it's gone, we can't get it back, and I want to be part of working with the city council, with residents, with groups such as Debar Marsh, and just hearing what everyone, getting all input, hearing all sides, and being able to kind of collaborate and work together to put some plans forward. I want to create a restoration plan for the marsh, obviously supporting the daylighting and seeing what we can do to help the daylighting of Willow Creek, but also kind of putting into more of a formal plan that pulls in residents. We have a lot of passion in Edmonds, and it would be great if we kind of had a plan around volunteering and, you know, planting cycles and weeding and that type of thing. I'm working on the same for Hutt Park. I want to also partner with the city on stormwater. It's a city issue, but it's not, it's our issue. And as a, as a port, I think we can be a leader in working across with the city and, you know, to look at what we can do for some of the stormwater issues, starting with Harper Square. Finally, I think we need to look at climate change. Ports all over, you know, are realizing the impact, and there's a lot of climate action plans being put together specifically for ports, and I would like to help drive that forward for our port. So my ask is that you consider voting for me on November 7? I would be very honored to serve you as your Port Commissioner, and I'll be around, take any questions, or talk to you after. Thank you.
I'd also like to announce that Mike Nelson and Adrian Fraley-Manillo's are also unable to join us today because they had a family vacation that they had planned a while ago. And so Mindy Wood is going to read Adrian Fraley-Manillo's statement for us this evening.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, thank you all for attending the first Edmonds Neighborhood Action Coalition and Edmonds Indivisible Meet and Greet the Candidates event. I unfortunately had family plans scheduled back in spring for this weekend, and I am unable to attend. She'd like to thank the organizers of this wonderful event, and she did recognize that it is a hot summer afternoon, and so thank you for suffering through this. Adrian says that she has been working for the citizens of Edmonds for almost eight years as your elected city council member. When reelected, I will continue to ensure our police department is funded. This past year, I introduced and lobbied for bringing a social worker on board to assist us with our services for the homeless and mentally ill in our community. This administration can no longer ignore and brush under the carpet our needs for low income and affordable housing, and the homeless issue that we have even here in Edmonds, including the bowl. I have spent much time over the past seven years working on the redevelopment of Highway 99 to include many forms of housing. These citizens who live around 99 deserve to have sidewalks, crime prevention, lighting, and road safety precautions as the rest of Edmonds does. I have lived in that area for over 33 years and have seen many changes. I've also fought for many areas of the environment for our citizens. Daylighting of Willow Creek and preservation of the marsh, from uninformed sources that would rather see the marsh paved over instead of rehab to the grand marsh that it was when I was a child and played near it. Global ice melt continues to be a problem for us all. The council this past year passed a two-foot increase in building heights on waterfront in order to protect our city. I voted against this as it's not enough protection. Scientists, including NOAA, have estimated the rise to be between 10 and 15 feet. This is an issue we will need to continue to develop to protect us all. I am a founding member of Dow Constantine's Coal and Oil Trains Work Group, trying to protect our citizens and Salysh Sea from the devastation of a spill in Edmonds. And lastly, my view regarding the protection of our downtown waterfront form from overdevelopment. I will not settle for Edmonds to look like Kirkland or Ballard for political gain of some of our elected. Please feel free to contact me if you wish to have further discussions regarding our future, as this note in my absence should be 10 pages long. All my best for a wonderful meet and greet. Adrian.
Thank you for allowing me to participate tonight. As the current vice president of the Edmonds School Board, I am honored to represent this community and contribute to the strength of public education. I have 27 years of active involvement in the public school system as a parent, community member, and taxpayer. I have participated in this district as a classroom volunteer, as a parent group leader and member, as a community volunteer, as a 15-year member of the Citizen Planning Committee, as well as being a member of the Edmonds School Board for the past 12 years. Through my experience, I've become familiar with the complexities of school issues, from funding challenges to changing student and community demographics. Edmonds is no longer a predominantly white district. As a board member, I will vote for policies that create intentional opportunities for diverse student, staff, and community voices and perspectives to become an integral part of district decision-making. Additionally, I will hold the district accountable by insisting upon measurable procedures and practices to ensure inclusion and engagements of students, staff, and communities of color. With the recent passage of the state budget, the current process for funding basic education is in transition. The district will face challenges to implement these changes, including the potential for an increase in state property taxes in our district, as well as a mandated reduction in funding from local levies. Within this climate of uncertainty, I would advocate for the following. Hire more teachers to reduce class sizes. Reduced student-to-teacher ratios will allow for more individualized instruction and support. Create system-wide capacity for the implementation of a proposed race and equity policy, as well as curriculum and professional development support for social-emotional learning strategies. Navigate the unknowns inherent in recent state compensation models to attract and retain highly effective classroom teachers. I am proud of the academic achievements of our students, the professionalism of our teachers, the dedication of our support staff, and the exceptional support of this community. Going forward, my goals are to maintain the financial strength and integrity of the district and provide opportunity for strategic professional development, and continue to emphasize improvements that directly affect the student in the classroom. Together, these will help our students remain in school and be supported in their educational goals as their diplomas become a springboard to a productive, engaged adulthood. Your vote is important, and I thank you for your consideration.
Hello, my name is Mitchell Velo, and I am running for Edmonds School Board, Director District Two, and is the incumbent in that position. A little bit about myself, well, first of all, let me thank ENAC and Indivisible Edmonds for inviting me to this. I got the invitation on Friday and cut short a camping trip so I could be here. I wanted to tell you a little bit about why I'm running for office. I have never run for elected office I have never run for elected office before, but I have been politically active. I have been a precinct committee officer for the Democrats for several years in Seattle and also here in Edmonds. And in this past year, I ran for the board of the First District Democrats, primarily to light a fire under our representatives to do things about income inequality in our community and in the nation as a whole. What personally motivated me to run for this position, however, is three years ago this month, my wife and I found out that we were pregnant with triplets. And spontaneous, completely surprise, and it was a very difficult pregnancy. In December of 2014, we moved to Edmonds, and we feel blessed to have twin daughters today, and we also have a secured who will be starting first grade in the Edmonds District this fall. While my daughters were born prematurely, they were born 26 weeks, and they spent a combined 199 days in the NICU. And while we were there caring for our daughters, I witnessed a lot of families who did not have the advantages that we did. We had savings. My wife was able to take an extended time off work so that she could be there to care for her daughter, for our daughters. And for, she also is a medical professional, so she knew how to navigate all of the ins and outs of the NICU. We saw families there that, you know, women who had to postpone their maternity leave because if they took it all while they were in the NICU, they would have none when the baby came home. They would work, you know, eight-hour days and then come in in the evenings to care for their children. You know, we saw families that were challenged with the English language, and they had to have support to be able to understand the very complex procedures that they would then have to do in their home when their children were finally released from the hospital. So as a result of that, we got involved with the March of Dimes. Last October, we were the ambassador family for their signature chef's auction. We helped raise $130,000 for the March of Dimes. And we, I saw running for the school board as the best way to reach out to those families in need, those at-risk students and families, and provide the advantages that our family has. But our school district is, you know, burdened with providing, and they basically have to provide those services to those families. Anyway, my name is Mitchell Bilo. I do ask for your vote. I'll be at my table shortly, so you can ask me any questions. Thank you very much.
So hi, I'm Deborah Kilgore, and thank you so much for organizing this. This is a great opportunity for the candidates. I want to say, tell you a little bit about myself. As a child, I saw how education lifted my own family out of poverty. My mom was a single mom, and she got an advanced degree when I was 11, and overnight, our prospects changed quite a bit. The promise of education stuck with me when I went on to college and when I went out into the work world, and eventually I did go back and get my doctorate in education. Since then, I've worked as a professor, a researcher, and a scholar of learning and education, what works in education. My three children are students in the district, and I've been a committed volunteer for many years. I've been PTO president, chair of the auction committee, chair of this committee, chair of that committee. And I've met many of you this past year as we work together to ensure that our community is a safe and loving place for all of our neighbors. So when the position of school board opened up, it just made sense to me to run, to commit in this particular way my talents, my experience, my energy, and my willingness to work hard for my community. I've worked with diverse people over the years, people who have very different life experiences from my own. And we all want the same thing. We all want a fair chance for our kids. And in the classrooms, in the schools, we largely agree on what that means. We know that reasonable class sizes and teacher workloads give our kids a fair chance at an excellent education. We know that spending a little less time in testing and a little more time learning give our kids a better chance. That parent involvement gives our kids a better chance. We know that challenging, experiential, collaborative learning and proper support for kids who face barriers to learning give our kids a better chance. And access to various pathways, to college, to skilled trades, to jobs that pay well, to becoming good citizens, those give our kids a better chance. And protecting our students from bullying, from sexual harassment, from race-based or religious-based or homophobic harassment or violence, that gives all our kids a better chance. And one last thing, I want to make a case for our integrated neighborhood schools. Our schools comprise largely of minority and poor families. They don't always get the resources that they need to be successful. And studies show that integrated schools benefit these kids. But research also tells us that all our kids benefit, that white kids and middle-class kids, they benefit too. They get, they develop skills in critical and flexible thinking, empathy, problem-solving, conflict resolution, reduced racial prejudice. They have comfort in diverse work groups, and that is what is required of our workforce today. So we have a great opportunity in Edmonds School District. We have a lot of integrated neighborhood schools, and I want to work hard for those schools. And so I ask you for your vote, and I'll work hard for every child in every school. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Kathy Baylor, and I'm running for Edmonds School, excuse me. Edmonds School District Board of Directors, position number four. I'm a nationally certified teacher of music and a professional educator. I have chosen to be a teacher despite the fact that it'll never pay well for one important reason. I believe that I can truly make a difference in this world if I can make a difference in the lives of children. I have a Bachelor of Arts degree from the University of Washington with emphasis on education, music, and Spanish language and literature. Over the past 30 years, I have been president of five education-based organizations, so I know from experience how to work on a team, build consensus, pull in outside resources, and take action. School board members are elected from the community. All decisions made by district administrators are examined by the board to ensure they align with community values and standards. It is therefore of the utmost importance that board members have strong, longstanding ties with the community. I've lived in Edmonds School District for 49 years. I graduated from Lynwood High School, as did my husband. My two daughters graduated from Edmonds High School. I have been a school district employee, a teacher, a parent, a volunteer, and an activist for education in this community. See how much it's shaking? As a school board director, I will work to prepare students to enter a global workforce by building humanities classes taught from the points of view of many cultures. All our students, regardless of their ethnic background, must learn to understand and respect people of all kinds. I will fight to make arts something that all children have access to. Arts education improves academic success and is a good avenue for teaching critical and creative thinking skills. It is a gift that we should be honored to bestow on our children. I'll fight for smaller class sizes, professional development for teachers that supports educational goals, and enough planning time to make teachers' days manageable. I'll fight for sanity in evaluation practices. As a teacher, my highest priority is to teach kids how to learn. It is a waste of their valuable time learning how to take standardized tests. They have more important work to do. I do not support charter schools or vouchers. Public education is a pillar of our success as a society, and the idea of disassembling it for the sake of the self-interest of a few is unconscionable. I ask for your vote in November so I can fight for our kids. Thank you to all of you and to ENAC and Indivisible Edmonds for inviting us here tonight. And I'm the last one, so that kind of says it all.